Good afternoon, everyone. This is Yolanda Chamron, Press President of the League of Women Voters of Napa County. We invited all nine candidates. Unfortunately, we don't have them all today. We did ask them to participate and did confirm. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi.
Good evening and welcome, and thank you for being with us tonight, Thursday, September 22nd, for the St. Helena City Council and Mayor Candidate Forum. I'm Teri Beck of the League of Women Voters of Napa County. Tonight, we are here to help educate Napa County voters by giving you the opportunity to hear from the candidates for this race. While we usually provide in-person forums due to continuing COVID-19 concerns, we're coming to you via Zoom webinar. We are providing Spanish translation via the Zoom interpreter capability. If you wish to listen to the Spanish translation, click the globe-like icon usually on the bottom right of your screen and check Spanish. Our translator for tonight is Dalila Hernandez. We are recording this forum, and it will be posted on YouTube, our League of Women Voters website, Facebook, and on our other social media platforms. Per FCC rules, no other recording of this forum or excerpts from the League of Women Voters' recording are allowed. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We are nonpartisan and do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League does participate in issue advocacy and voter education. If you would like to join us in our work, please visit our website, l w v n a p a dot o r g for membership information and much, much more. The League encourages civil discourse, and the candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. The candidates have agreed to confine their remarks to their qualifications and issues and not to resort to defamatory remarks about the other candidate. We expect all registrants to also be respectful of all candidates. Microphones and video are off for everyone except the candidates and the League of Women Voters' forum team. Please remember to mute yourself when you are not speaking. Our League's team helping with this forum tonight are our moderator, Chris Benz, our timekeeper, Linda Diederger Yolo, our technical host, Sherri Thomas. I will now turn the evening over to Chris Benz.
Thank you, Teri, for the introduction. Good evening, everyone, and welcome candidates. Tonight, we have with us candidates for the position of Mayor and City Council of St. Helena. This League of Women Voters' forum provides an opportunity for our community to learn about the candidates for these positions. We will do this by giving each candidate time for an opening statement, after which we will have about an hour for as many questions as possible, and then we will finish with each candidate's closing statement. The questions were solicited in advance from the community and League of Women Voter members. Our team screens the questions to avoid duplication and to ensure non-partisanship and civility. The candidates have not seen the questions in advance. The candidates we have tonight are running for mayor Eric Hall and Paul Doring, and for city council Anna Chutou. Candidates, please keep yourself on mute when you are not answering a question. Also, please ensure that you can view the timekeeper screen so you can keep to your allotted time. And I'd like to welcome another candidate, Mr. William or Billy Summers. Welcome. And please put yourself on mute, Mr. Summers, until you speak. Our timekeeper Linda will start with a green screen. Then she will flash a yellow screen when you have only 30 seconds left. And finally, a red screen when your time is up. I retain the right to mute any candidate who continues to run over their allotted time or violates their signed agreement with us to maintain civil discourse. And I'd like to welcome Amy Bodine, a candidate for city council. And I just wanted to check that Ms. Bodine and Mr. Summers saw the timekeeping screens, green for go, yellow for 30 seconds, and red for finisher sentence, please. We will start with the candidates' opening statements. The starting order was determined by random selection before the forum. I will rotate the starting order with each question. The closing statements will be in reverse order from the opening statements. So we will now start with opening statements, and each candidate has one and a half minutes to introduce themselves. Mr. Summers, we would like to start with you. Go ahead and unmute.
Of course you would. Completely unprepared, and the link didn't work on my computer, so I'm just on my phone. But basically, this is a moment so that I can share more about myself and where I stand on city council, right? Yeah, so obviously, water quality, affordability, fire awareness, fire prevention, taking care of, you know, the city streets and the city sidewalks, which are in ill repair, are of the utmost importance for our community. And, you know, my job here, or as I see it as I'm coming up to the precipice of it, is to be a conduit for our community, you know, which includes our senior citizen community, our Latino population, and everybody that enjoys St. Helena. It's one of the most amazing cities in the entire world. I've lived in many countries and many different cities in America, and it is just absolutely amazing. And just like all cities, it has issues for the community, and there's issues that the city is facing regarding funding and taking care of our infrastructure, which we've under-invested in in the past. And so we need to, you know, focus and be open to new ways of handling these situations and these problems that we face in a smart, green, you know, outside-the-box way. I think following along with the way that we've been doing things, you know, is becoming outmoded. And we need to think, you know, in a more futuristic way because we have an opportunity to become, you know, literally the crown jewel of the Napa Valley. And we can lead into the future if we make choices together and inform the public of what this looks like and what it costs and how much it's going to save us in the future. But, you know, we need to create more transparency. Okay, thanks.
Sorry. Mr. Hall, we'd like to hear from you next. Unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for providing the opportunity to speak tonight and to provide everyone on this forum with the chance to hear directly from the candidates. And a shout out to Kim Farmer, I'm not sure she's on, but for keeping me on track with the Voters Edge as well. Hello, I'm Eric Hall. I'm running for St. Helena Mayor because many of us care about having a bright and sustainable future in St. Helena. It's my intention to continue working collectively, broadly and deeply across our community, like I've been doing for the last two years while serving on council, to help chart a new course toward the restoration of our town and recovery of our cherished way of life. St. Helena needs some TLC, and as odd as it may sound, I'm thrilled. Our city recently published a work list that is four times bigger than anything we've ever seen. I'm thrilled because it dramatically improves transparency for our residents on years' worth of deferred problems at City Hall. I'm hopeful that I'll be able to lead us through this important turning point. I'm confident my 35 years of management leadership will help guide our community to a brighter future. And this is why Senator Bill Dodd, Assembly Member Cecilia Aguilar Currie, County Supervisor Diane Dillon, and State Treasurer Fiona Ma have all endorsed my candidacy for mayor. For the first time in years, St. Helena is enjoying substantial productive relationships with our regional and state elected officials in addressing many long overdue issues. I'm proud to have these tremendously experienced leaders on my team as we come together to create a brighter future for our city and valley. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to hear from Ms. Bodine next. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi. Hello there. How is everybody this evening? I was with Billy. I was struggling to find the link, so I'm glad I'm here. Sorry. Hi, Billy. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm new on the scene, and this is all new to me. So I'm just beginning this journey. And so my name is Amy Bodine, and I'm running for the St. Helena City Council for the November 8th election coming up here. And I guess what I always fall back on really, when I talk to people about why I'm running, is that I love St. Helena so much, and I have my three children here, and I want to be able to continue to live here. And I want to see this town really start to make some amazing enhancements. And I love it, and I think that we can plan for the future. And I'm here for that. I'm here for new ideas. I'm here for, you know, a presence of someone who is just a mother of three who genuinely cares about our city. So that's who I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Doring.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this candidate forum and for serving democracy. At this stage in our country, we need you. Thank you so much for that. My name is Paul Doring. I'm the current Vice Mayor of the City of St. Helena. I've been on the council for eight years, the last four of which I've served as Vice Mayor. I attended UC Berkeley and UC Davis Law School. I've been married to my sweetheart and best friend for 34 years, Cara Doring, who is a Spanish teacher at our middle school in St. Helena, Robert Louis Stevenson Middle School. I have, we have two adult children, one still at home, Leah, one is out living in Oakland. We've lived in the Napa Valley for 31 years, 10 of which were in Calistoga, and I am coming to you right now for my law office in Calistoga. I've had my law office here since 1997. I specialize in business, real estate, of late, a lot of insurance claims, land use, and general civil litigation. I represent a broad variety of clients, including vineyard managers, restaurateurs, hospitality owners, individuals, and a number of small business owners. I previously served on the Calistoga Planning Commission when I lived here, and I was elected to the Calistoga City Council. I'm looking forward to sharing that experience as St. Helena's next mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we'll hear from Ms. Chutou.
Thank you, Chris, so much, and thank you all of the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. I am very happy to be running for a second term on the St. Helena City Council. The past four years have given me really challenging and fantastic experience. I come from a background in leadership in both nonprofit and for-profit organizations. Like Amy, I'm also a mom of two and raising my family here in this community and love it. I am both proud of the work we have done and also understand fully the enormous challenges we face as a city. We got through 2020 with a balanced budget and without staff layoffs. Our staff were heroic during the fires and helped protect our primary water source and our city from having a worse situation. We're building a new 14 million wastewater treatment plant that'll help us process and use recycled water. We created a pop-up permit program to let businesses go in more easily on our main street and recently secured a $2.5 million FEMA grant for vegetation management to protect our city from future fires. Now, we need to face the reality that we have to find more revenue sources to be able to fund our city's infrastructure, including roads and streets, not only for cars but also for bike and walking. I see a St. Helena that is uniquely beautiful and connected to community and good jobs that is worth doing the hard work to make it even better in a home that we are all proud of. We need to focus on infrastructure, new revenue, water, fire, housing, and climate solutions and issues. I'm really looking forward to continuing to be on the council and to make things happen over the next four years. Thank you so much for having me here tonight.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move into questions. And for the first question, we'll start with Mr. Summers. The question is, what are your main priorities? How would you advocate for them?
Well, the main priorities, like I stated before, are water quality, safety, and affordability. And I think, you know, there's some brilliant ideas of moving us forward from simply, you know, making, creating wastewater that's non-potable and getting that to all the houses and upgrading the wastewater system to where that wastewater becomes potable. And we can add to, you know, our level of usable, potable water. The other issue, of course, is fire prevention and awareness. And I think more people need to know how they could do their part and help out. What do we do? How do I harden my property? What can I do to pitch in? And if everybody pitches in, then we can get there. But we need awareness of what to do and how to do it, and that information needs to get to the public so we can all add a little drop of water to that ocean. The third thing is treats.
That's all. I'm afraid I forgot to say that candidates have one minute for the answers to questions. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Hall. Again, the question is, what are your main priorities? How would you advocate for them?
Thank you very much for the question. I think, you know, one of our challenges is that we have a number of priorities before we got hit with the whole series of crises, right, that came upon us, which includes not only our climate crisis, but our firestorms, our extended drought, and our affordable housing crisis. So all of these together make up a very lengthy list of priorities. It's hard to pull any of them together or out separately. But to address all of them, we're going to need more revenue in the city of St. Helena. So that sits at the top of my list. We must find ways to creatively generate more revenue without destroying the character or charm of our community. It's a balancing act, but I think there's a lot of ways that we can get there. Included in that is a variety of things that are related to climate, and I view fire as one of those issues. Affordable housing is another.
That's good. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Bodine on your main priorities and how you would advocate for them.
Um, I think that my main priority that I'm learning as I'm going through this process would be organizing, getting things organized. I see strategy being like probably in my mind, one of the biggest priorities that we as a council and city are going to face, and then coming together and, you know, finding ways where we can come together as a community and look forward and not back, and really planning and strategizing. I'm thinking that's, because of course, that is, for all of the issues that we face, I really want there to be a plan and for everyone to be included in making that.
Thank you. Mr. Doring, can we hear from you on priorities and how you would advocate for them?
Thank you so much. So this is all old news for most of us. We need to focus on water security, fire prevention and preparation, and infrastructure, long-deferred. As Councilmember Hall has recognized, we need to continue to focus on that and not beander away from these issues. Really, we need to bring the community along to all focus together and do some strategic planning that narrows all of the goals we have to those primary goals. And Councilmember Hall is correct, we also have housing issues, climate change issues. But I wanted just to continue to build the relationship I have with my fellow council members here and work on behalf of the community, listening to the community, planning for our revenues, and moving forward urgently in the next few years.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Chutou.
Thank you so much. My fellow council members have listed them out so much. We know that the issues are our infrastructure, which also includes staffing. We just had a candidate briefing, and every single department head came before us. They all talked about staffing, and that's linked to the affordability and the housing problems that we're having throughout Napa County and not having enough housing. And here in St. Helena, we really feel that acutely. So what that means is we don't have enough staff to really implement the key projects that we need to do. So we need to focus on that, focus on making sure that we stay competitive and can keep people in the positions, and also focus on climate change and housing. Once again, those infrastructure projects that also include water that's so vital for us. And of course, all of those defensible space projects. In terms of how do I advocate for it, at every and all opportunity, I work hard to build relationships throughout Napa County and to sit on policies like the California League Environmental Policy so that I'm connected to people that are coming up with solutions, and we can implement those in our own city.
Thank you. For our second question, we'll start with Mr. Hall. The question is, what problems and opportunities do you see in how the city budget resources are allocated? What specifically would you propose to do to include more voices in the budget process and to make the results more understandable or transparent?
Wow, thank you very much. Great question. This past spring, I had the opportunity to help educate our community about the need for our general obligation bond. And I'm pleased that the community voted nearly 80% in favor of that revenue bond or general obligation bond to help with our infrastructure. I would continue to do the same thing, which is hold town halls as many as we potentially could to ensure that the whole community has a chance to chime in on what are our priorities going forward. So our strategic planning process needs to be expanded much more beyond two sessions that are three hours each and just the council. It needs to be a much broader, community-engaged sessions with our elderly, our Latino populations, our families, everybody involved. The best way I know how to do that is to get in front of everybody as often as we possibly can in very large forums. That's what I would advocate for.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Ms. Bodine on problems and opportunities for how the budget resources are allocated and how you would make the process more inclusive and.
Okay. So I'm going to add on to that. I think that the community really should have a voice. So I would like for more people to be involved in the council meetings. And the more voices we have around us that are from the community, the more able we are to, you know, advocate for them. So I think that it's really like essential to be out in the community, listening to people, but also to encourage them to be really involved in our, you know, our meetings. And that's tricky, of course, because everyone's working so hard. So these, you know, the people that I, you know, would want to be able to hear most are the people that, you know, we would have to, you know, find ways to get them to these, to these meetings, you know? If that's by putting out the word or on, you know, social media or just getting people to feel like what they have to say really matters to us.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Doring.
Thank you. So as I see it, the budget document itself is an educational tool. It is something that has to come from the community based on strategic planning and goal setting. It's really the community's document. It's not the council's document. It is something that is living and breathing and growing, but it is informed by folks in the community. Absolutely, I agree that we have to do better at strategic planning. We have to use this document more to educate the community and bring the community aboard. With respect to inclusivity, I have worked my entire life building trust in communities of LGBTQ folks, Latino folks, and every other folk in our community. And that trust is something that's important to build upon, to bring folks forward to participate in these discussions, participate in committees. Really, we need a council budget committee going into next year where we have a subcommittee working on that and then working with our staff and our city council. And that's what I would like to see happening. I see the red box.
Thank you. Yes. And now, Ms. Chutou.
Thank you.
Opportunities.
Thank you. So one year, we did during budget time do a community-wide survey. I think that was successful to get feedback and overall direction in different broad areas that the community wanted us to focus on. Of course, always having the limited resources we have. I think a big opportunity is to go out and educate the community on the budget. And we, as the council, can be more used to help make that happen as liaisons to the public. There are so many opportunities with the different clubs that get together and people. You learn that as we go through this candidate process. And we can use that to educate groups on the budget. I loved Councilmember Hall when he brought that up because I saw when Vice Mayor Doring and I went to all of the government classes at the high school to recruit for our new council youth reps, we also could answer questions and educate community members and our youth on how local government works. I would like to do more of that, and we could do that around the budget process specifically.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Summers.
Hi. Yeah, I think there's some great ideas coming through from all the city staff. And I think, you know, to add that, I think town halls are critical and getting the word out, whether that's walking the streets, utilizing social media, creating pamphlets. But this is, you know, the budget of all the citizens, and they need to get their hands on it and understand what it is. And so I would invite city staff, you know, to these town hall meetings. And they could share, you know, the true nuts and bolts of how the city works and provide that sort of inside, neutral, non-political perspective on where we're at with the budget and what our limitations are and, you know, where we can create more opportunities, but what that cost benefit provides. So, you know, I'm an advocate to reach out to the people, but bring some city staff in there so that it can be summarized and understood, you know, in a simple, effective way by our citizens.
Thank you. For our third question, we'll start with Ms. Bodine. The question is, how would you promote consensus for discussing key issues facing the city of St. Helena and to strategize opportunities and solutions to meet the city's needs?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yes. How would you promote consensus for discussing key issues facing the city of St. Helena and to strategize opportunities and solutions to meet the city's needs?
Wow. Okay, well, what's on my mind right now is that there were about 200 people that showed up to the library the other day. And I think like that that's a way for us to create outreach as these events are coming back into our city, which is incredible. And that's a way also for us to reach like what people are thinking and feeling about policies and things that are going on in the city government. So, I mean, also, city, so I guess that's what I guess, so city events is what I'm trying to say, things like that. Because then, you know, everyone is invited, and that's essential to like who I am. Because of course, you know, and not very many people get invited to the exclusive parties, but to an event that's held by the city, then we all can come together. And then we all are sort of hearing what people are thinking and feeling about the policies. So I guess it's best to get together and talk about it.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Doring.
Thank you for the question. So, you know, we have often been a polarized, divided community on a number of issues, always trying to balance the need for improved revenues with the need to maintain a high quality of life. That is the continuing balancing act that we are always engaged in as council members. I think frankly, we need to be straight and open with all of our citizens about the realities of our life and the needs to operate a full-service city, library, all of the wastewater, water, police, fire. It costs a lot of money. We have to have a reality check there, go out. And then we have to bring people on, the leaders of our community, including our council members, to advocate for that and build consensus. We have to use a talent in our own community to do that, including the talent right here on this forum, Mr. Hall and Ms. Chutou. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chutou.
Thank you. Will you please repeat the first part of the question?
Yes. How would you promote consensus for discussing key issues facing the city of St. Helena? Yes. How would you promote consensus for discussing key issues facing the city of St. Helena? And to strategize opportunities and solutions to meet the city's needs?
Thank you. So this is always difficult because of the Brown Act that you learn once you're in the elected position. You need to have all of the conversations with your fellow council members need to be in the public format. So it's really important. You can't speak to one other council member about an issue. But if it's going to be on the agenda, it's only one and everything else needs to be in the public domain. So it's really important to build trust and that is true for community members as well on issues. So that's how all how you treat each other behind the out in the community, behind closed doors, and then also in the council meetings. And you can really get a lot more done when you bring out the best in people. That also includes staff. My past background was all about working to build trusting cultures, and I bring that to this work now. Having strong relationships is really important to me, and that's how we're going to actually meet all of these challenges and be able to implement solutions.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Yeah, to get a consensus, we need to talk to the people. We need to get out there and speak to the senior citizens, the Latino population, the community leaders. We need to educate, listen and reciprocate and take that information and and utilize it and and be open minded. Because you never know where a great idea can come from. And we can't limit ourselves by thinking that we're going to come up with the best idea in the room. It can come from anyone in this community, young, old, where, you know, whatever your culture background is. So it's really important that we get out and educate the people. And we get a consensus through communicating and and listening to them and seeing where everybody's at and understanding the needs and and how this machine really works and how we can serve it best. So we need to get out there and and communicate and listen to the community and, you know, gather us that way.
Thank you. And Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much. It's a great question and I'm I'm happy that there's actually consensus building right here on the call. I think all of us have some great points. What I think about consensus building, I I think it sort of starts with education. How do we all understand the facts to begin with? That's an issue of transparency and the wheels of government work very slowly. It's very complex. And not everybody is required to show up on a council meeting. So it's just us, but to to Vice Mayor Doring's comments earlier about finding a way to translate this to our community, it's absolutely essential. For me, I do that by speaking publicly in front of people. I think town halls, any form we can help educate our community. It's critical to Mr. Summers' points that we have staff help do that. Similarly, our city website needs a complete revamp and overhaul. The fact that the few of us can get out and talk to the community is one thing, but we need all all pistons at the city helping educate our town about what we need and build consensus.
Thank you. For the fourth question, we'll start with Mr. Doring. And the question is, what do you see as a role of the police department? In terms of creating trust with at-risk communities?
Well, they have a role certainly in creating trust with at-risk community. Do you say at-risk communities?
Yes.
So, you know, if you go back in the history of St. Helena, you'll know that there has been some difficult relationship with our communities, especially our Latino community. And so the role, as I see it, is community policing being seen in every single part of our city, forming relationships with the leaders of folks in our community. I have a very strong relationship with all of all of our police officers, including our police chief, Chris Hartley. We need to continue to educate and break down barriers, humanize our law enforcement and connect into the community where there is trust built up over many years. And we can do better, I think, in that regard. And I would promote that as an ex-mayor. I have relationships with really good ones with folks in our Latino community and other communities that are at risk, including our seniors. And so I'll continue to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Toto.
Okay, thank you very much. So the way that the police do this is that we continue to do programs like we have the National Night Out program where the police came together with in partnership with our park and recs department and created this great community event. There was even a scavenger hunt that the kids and I went with my kids could participate up and down main streets to all the different stores. So we were interacting with them and getting to know the police and see them in a different way. The kids even got to do a water balloon flight fight at the end of the evening where they got to throw these water balloons at police officers. There was so much joy and excitement in that. Those kind of events help create relationships and bonds with our police officers that are really important. We also have a school resource officer that's in all of our public schools. When she does programs like hand out books to kids, something that each kid in the public school gets a free library book, that's a meaningful moment. During COVID, she came to the house and actually gave that book. That's really important to build those relationships. We need to do that all through the lens of equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
The job of the police is to serve and protect. But people have a different perspective based on their experiences with police. And it's important to shift that perspective. I love what Anna mentioned, you know, the water balloon fight and the and the police weren't off limits. It's important to find more events like that where we can humanize these police and understand that they're a human being and they go through challenges in life, just like we do. And they're not out, you know, to get these at-risk communities, you know, they're there, they they work for them. And 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 that's a perspective shift that is going to take work and education and integration. You know, integrating these police and saying, hey, I'm here to help. I'm not here to hurt you. And that's a that's a it's a great topic, you know, and I think it's a beautiful transition if we can implement that and and create that perspective shift.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much. I I like everything I'm hearing so far. Particularly the National Night Out. I I also enjoyed that event quite a bit. You know, the the challenge here in community building for the PD is very similar to to the last question about the the challenge for for our city council in addressing its issues. I think obviously we can keep up training and I think our PD is doing a fantastic job there. Given the resources that they have, it's remarkable, everything that they're able to accomplish. But I think humanizing them is the common theme here. One way to help them do that is to give them actually more help. And by that, it means more bodies so they can spend more time in our communities, speaking with people, speaking with kids, speaking with parents and getting to know all of us one by one. There's only fifty-five hundred or fifty-six hundred of us here. So finding money to help our police do their job better, I think, would help everybody across the board. Thank you.
Ms. Bodine.
Wow, this was an interesting one to go last on because I agree with everybody. Everyone said amazing. And they had amazing answers. To just add on to that, I think that we could do a quarterly national. So like, you know, every every two or three months, we have some event where, I mean, reaching the at-risk community can begin with the children, which is what I'm really like, like hearing about these fun events for scavenger hunts. My kids would love that. So definitely just, I think, upping upping that, you know, like, like one every quarter, something where we're having fun with the officers and they're seen out in the community smiling. That's essential, just being themselves, not, you know, necessarily on duty. So that everyone is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Ms. Toto. The question is, how will you work on recruiting highly qualified staff? Should the city research incentives for hiring or retaining interested interested candidates and to add employees more representative of the community?
Thank you. Okay, so for this one, we just helped do one step forward by a recent city council action where we are giving our people more money. And that's a big piece. We see that. We are not, we have to be not only competitive with surrounding areas, but even do a little better would be ideal because of our geographic location and how much almost of an island we can be because of traffic. And and how crazy high the house prices are. So people that work here can cannot live here and they're having to travel long distances. So with recruiting, it's really about being able to pay our people well enough to make it so that they want to have these jobs and they don't leave us as soon as they get the experience here and go somewhere else. We need to make sure that we keep them here. And yes, we have done some incentives recently, even like a housing incentive, knowing that we need to have good, very high quality staff here in our city so that we can deliver the best possible service to our residents.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Yeah, if we if we want to draw in, you know, quality staff that that meets the needs of our city, we need to get at least a market rate and be competitive in in what we're paying these people. Because if they're that good, they're going to be that desirable for other cities to draw them in. And I think the incentive idea is great, you know, and if these staff members have to travel like many of them do, then we need to have a gas incentive, you know. And 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 take care of them as best as we can. And and, you know, I, you know, and and maybe that looks like other incentives as well or other ways to support gift, you know, bring other rewards into the opportunity of working for our city. And that's something we can get creative with because of, you know, everything that we offer in this town. And we just have to gather the community and get some people to be able to support with some of the resources that they have through their businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much. So it's a it's our number one challenge today, which is retaining staff and also recruiting staff. And Councilmember Shido hit the nail on the head when she was talking about money. We've we've done some things. There's a lot more that we we would like to do. We don't have money. Affordability here is the key issue. So we have to solve our affordable housing crisis, which might start with workforce housing for city staff specifically. We need to, as we're thinking about housing affordability, that also helps reduce cars on the road and reduce our carbon footprint. If we can have our staff actually live in our town, our staff basically doesn't. They commute here. We also need to look at models that might create more upward mobility for staff. And that also might provide more services to our community and expand staff members' resumes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bodine.
I'm just going to say workforce housing. That is, you know, I'm I'm like right in this. This is something that's really, you know, like very important to me. But workforce housing would be incredible. And I like would be very excited to bring that on board, to look at that, to talk about that or and figure out how to how to make that an incentive that people can can have.
Thank you. And Mr. Doring.
So this question touches upon some of the prior question we had about humanizing folks. You know, we have a tendency in our community to dehumanize institutions, folks who work in institutions, and we need to break away from that. One of the I agree with everything that's been said by my colleagues here. We need to continue to show respect for our for our employees through rewarding and through salary increases, and we are doing that now. One of the great things that we're going to be doing is we're going to be moving to a new city hall at the Upper Napa Valley College. And I can tell there's great excitement there because it's showing our staff a new way of looking at how they're going to be operating. It's a very beautiful sight. And I think they feel that that they are being loved, frankly, by making that move. It's unbelievable excitement. I wish we could have gotten in there months ago, but that is the thing. Treat our our employees with dignity and respect, especially as we talk about these policy issues going forward. We want to make sure that we keep them top of mind when we're out talking about some of the issues that we have with finance and infrastructure. So that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Summers. The question is, what is your opinion about the adequacy and sustainability of the city's water supply? How will you plan so that we balance adding new users to the system without adversely impacting current users?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yes. What is your opinion about the adequacy and sustainability of the city's water supply? How will how will you plan so that we balance adding new users to the system without adversely impacting current users?
Yeah, there I I I think that's the number one issue in our town is is affordability and adequacy. You know, the 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 climate is warming up and the water supply is draining down. And how do we meet those needs? That's what that's where we have to think outside the box and get, you know, become more futuristic. I I I think upgrading that wastewater system to, you know, making that water potable. They do it in Orange County. They do it in Germany. It's done in Israel. And I think we need to get past, you know, our thinking about it. It's a paradigm shift, you know, in our minds to realize that that water could be turned into potable water. And that is probably the future for our entire planet. And why don't we step into that now and protect ourselves for the future and lead the Napa Valley? And promote our city saying, hey, we're a smart city, we're a green city, and we are doing things that are that are futuristic and really sustainable and start inspiring other cities to take those steps that can help our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much. I I really like Mr. Summers' comments there. I think St. Helena is a very under-recognized asset in terms of what we can do in this space to demonstrate to the rest of the world. I just think we have the world's attention, but it's about wine. And we have an opportunity to make it about green, whether it's energy self-reliance or water, specifically your question on water. Our wastewater treatment plant, once it's done, should allow the city to conserve twenty percent more water. That's a lot more users. Mathematically, the more users we have, it helps balance the cost per user. Right? We have a declining population today for a number of reasons. The more it declines, the higher the cost is per user. So we need to balance that out. We also need to find new supply. So we're going to treat water that will help to some degree. But other new supply by load balancing here in the upper valley with our neighboring partners will also help.
Thank you. Ms. Bodine.
Um, I would say that educating the community about the wastewater plant is going to be a big one, but also also, you know, educating people about their water use. So, you know, conserve, having people conserve water, paying attention to the water that they're, you know, they're watering with. I think that it's going to be everybody's responsibility to to think and be educated about that. But also, and then to change the thinking about the wastewater. And that's the future. And I think so educating most of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Doring.
So we are in a precarious position with respect to water quality and water supply. It is not good news and we all have to come to grips with that. We are going to have to really focus on reclamation and conservation over the next many years. We really dodged the bullet last year with late October rains that filled our Bell Canyon reservoir. We also received water from the city of Napa and then we round out our water supply through groundwater. A lot of folks in the county are not too thrilled about that, but that is what we need. I agree with Councilmember Hall that we should be created and looking at alternative supplies. But that may be a longer term situation. Conservation, rewarding folks for not using water and reclamation, using the water that is beyond tertiary. At some point in California, we were all going to be drinking water that has been treated. That is the way it's going to go. We're not there yet, of course. But we need to continue to do that with Purple Pipe, bringing that water out into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Toto.
Thank you so much. So this is, you know, water issues are one of the ones that keep me up at night because it is a very scary situation. Being at the council level, you see that data. And when we declared that phase two water emergency, it was very scary if we would have enough water. And we were fortunate that we had that one weather event that gave us the ten inches in about a twenty-four hour period of time that filled up our Bell Canyon reservoir. So the way that we get through this is by conservation and putting in as much of that purple pipe as possible so that we can be able to use the recycled water for outside irrigation. That is a big use of water. And also just making sure that we're doing smart policies, new developments, use less water. And also just making sure that we're doing smart policies, new developments, use less water. There is now data that is, uh, that you can get out in California that shows that you can add houses and still reduce water use in different cities. That's been proven. The way that you do that is by also setting really efficient water use policies like zero scapeing. We could look at that here in St. Helena and make sure on the policy level, we are making it easy for people to save. That's also putting in the smart water meters. So people have real time data that will change behavior and people will use less water. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Mr. Hall. And the question is, fire safety is of utmost concern for the city of St. Helena. What are your ideas to better protect our community?
Thank you very much for the question. Um, you know, fire safety is something that, uh, that literally exploded onto the scene here, uh, just a few years ago. And now we're all suffering from PTSD because of it. Um, it's not just an issue for the city of St. Helena. It's an issue for everybody here in the upper valley and in the county, um, as well as statewide. But, um, I, I think about fire issue, um, as forest management. How do we get back to, uh, looking at having forestry taught in our schools again? So our community comes up being much more fire aware. Our firewise councils are a huge step forward. They're helping everywhere. Uh, we have CDF stations, seven of them now here, here in the, uh, upper valley, I think is helpful. But a much more coordinated regional effort is going to be required going forward. And, um, I think forest management is one of those key pieces.
Thank you. Ms. Bodine.
We were just in this meeting and the, um, Fire Chief was saying that there was something called Wumi, I think. And they were saying that around the, um, city limits, that now they're doing more deforestation, just clearing out at a, at a larger distance. So that's policy that I'm really for. I think, um, they want to keep, of course, the city, the city of St. Helena safe. I, I'm really interested in seeing them out, you know, um, us get people out there to, to like extend that, uh, level of fire safety from, from the homes and, um, our citizens that are just really right next to, um, that brush that just lights up, you know, um, so I'm big into that. Uh, I think that those pol-, like changing, um, you know, po-, the policies so that things are just more logical. This, you know, that makes a lot of sense to be doing that. It makes a lot of sense to, um, once again, um, letting people, um, know, being educated about what we can all do. I think he was saying out in Lake County, they had handed out 700 of these huge extinguishers. And it, you know, seven fires were prevented. And I was like, that's amazing. So it is, I was like, that's, yeah, I'm like that, that is great news. So
Time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Doring.
So I agree that it's a regional approach, especially in the up valley. We have to bring back Measure L and do a forceful campaign throughout the whole county to bring our folks along, build consensus on that. We need the funding to do the fuel reduction. We need the funding to do the camera sensors. We need the funding to do training, especially in our community where we have a lot of seniors. We have to treat this like countries like Australia and Spain and other countries have done, who are dealing with climate change well before we were. Prepare, prepare, prepare and prevent, but we need the funding. Measure L, we need to reintroduce that. And I am committed to working at least up valley with my colleagues to get that passed.
Thank you. Ms. Toe.
Thank you. I also really like the regional approach because there is funding available right now for this issue. And we could even look to working with partners in Sonoma County and figure out how we all go after the funding for this work. We just got a FEMA grant for $2.5 million that we're now going to be implementing. We're in phase one of that. There's going to be a phase two. That shows you the magnitude and expense of doing this forest management that really now has been proven that will make it so that the fires do less damage. We need to be doing more of that. We need to be continuing to do the fire preparedness in our community and make sure people realize that there are not enough emergency personnel to help everybody. So the best level of defense is knowing your neighbors and talking about, uh, talking about and getting ready for emergency ahead of time. We need to continue to do the evacuation drills, especially for our most vulnerable communities, our senior communities, and make sure that we learn lessons learned from these emergencies and continue to get better and better as a community and stronger.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Yeah, I think, you know, Napa Firewise is, is, is a great place to start. And, um, you know, I think these fire safe councils can spread like wire wildfire if we get the residents, um, you know, educated on how do we create some hazardous fuel reduction? And what do we do to harden, you know, my property and protect my neighbors from, you know, wildfire? Where, you know, this is not something that a single community, single community member or, um, simply, you know, the firehouse alone. This is a community issue that everybody needs to gather in on. And it's like recycling. When I see my neighbor recycle, it starts to inspire me to recycle and, and, and do my part. And when everyone starts doing their part, thousands of residents gather into this and get educated and they're aware of it. We're teaching our young people and we're preparing, you know, our elderly community. It, it just, you know, it hits the brain and it changes the way we think about it. And we realize we can all do a little something, you know, every day I can pick up a few things. I can, you know, get rid of these leaves. Maybe I neighbor. Thank you.
Um, our next question will start with Ms. Bodine. And the question is, city halls moved to Napa Valley College seems to be requiring lots of renovations. How do you plan to ensure that the move is cost effective for St. Helena residents? Go ahead and unmute. Yeah.
Okay. Hey, um, this is, this is budget stuff that I'm just now learning about. So I, I've been hearing the city managers talk about how they come to the council to talk to, to, to talk to council members about, um, receiving money. So, um, that would be then, I imagine, um, the city manager coming to us asking for money to, you know, have these, uh, the building then have things that need to be done to it. Um, that is a budget thing that I'm not privy to yet. I don't, I don't know how this council then gives money out. So I'm going to say I, um, the safety comes first. Obviously we want them to be safe in the building. That's got to be, um, taken care of, but I'm, I'm not clear yet, just as a candidate. You know, um, how I give that money, how that would be given. Um, and, and I would want it to be given. So I'll say that I, you know, that I'll say that I would want to give it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doring.
Thank you. So this idea about moving to the college came from me several years ago because I know a lot of the folks who serve on the college board, including at that time Rosales Segura. So the tenant improvements have escalated in price based on supply chain issues. And really based on trying to make our police department much more safe and secure. And the cost of that is, uh, has grown fairly immensely. I, I think that we need to continue to have good discussions with the board, uh, the college board and the new president. And the new president will be meeting with our city manager, uh, in early October. I, I've introduced them both together to continue to this dialogue. We have a seven year lease on that property, obviously, and Mr. Hall knows this. Uh, seven years is probably not enough to get our money, our return back. And so we're going to have to have other discussions about, uh, either extending that lease or entering into other kinds of relationships. And I'm happy to, to be serving the community in that regard.
Thank you. Ms. Toe.
Thank you. I was shocked the first time I saw those numbers too, for the tenant improvements. And I've since learned through listening and hearing more about it. It's just the reality right now of the building costs and what we're doing. We're moving our whole city hall and also our police department at a time when costs are through the roof and they have been actually even before the pandemic. I sat on the shape committee with many other wonderful community members. We've also had the, um, and the infrastructure financial task force come back with numbers. I remember the Noel and Tam, the architects' projections of funds to build a new city hall. That was in the $20 million, all the way up to $42 million, depending on all the different buildings that we were looking at. That was for a new building cost. So yes, this is very high. To me, this is still a better deal than that new building would have been.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the, the council in the city's done a great job by finding an opportunity of moving to the college, you know, and not building something brand new. So those funds can be reserved for something else that's important. And there's a lot of important things. Um, of course, you know, it also comes down to, to getting enough bids that we can find something, you know, the most affordable option, you know, for these tenant improvements so that we know we're not overspending or, or, or making mistakes as we, as the city's made in the past. But I think with the new city manager and the current council, you know, there's a lot more oversight and awareness uh, than there's ever been in our city. So, you know, I'm looking forward to it. Uh, being, you know, the best case scenario we, we can find because there's a lot of solutions coming out of the people that we have now, you know, and, and, and things aren't just kind of being slid under the rug as they have been in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much. It's a, it's another, uh, very good question. I think, um, uh, both Vice Mayor Doring and, and Councilmember Shudo, uh, you know, hit the nail on the head here. Uh, I think when we first, first of all, I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Doring for, uh, getting this deal done originally. Uh, what, what, what a mess we would be in, uh, had this not happened. So it's a tremendously beneficial to the city to be able to move over to Napa Valley College. First of all, I think at the time, the deal was announced, it was a half million dollars to, to get the move done in the TI work. And we're, we're almost five times that now, one year later. Um, so it's an example of how costs are escalating very, very rapidly and why we are in such a revenue pinch across the board everywhere today. I'm, I'm very hopeful and, um, you know, I was thinking about, uh, my endorsements. Actually, I was thinking we, we could probably secure funding if we wanted to buy the college and work a deal with the college. Uh, it's probably seven to $10 million for us to do that. We would still need money. But if we can find the funding through relationships with Bill Dodd, Cecilia Aguiar Curry and Fiona Ma, they provided funding in the past for us. We'll continue to work with them and provide more in the future.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Mr. Doring. The question is, how do you propose to best utilize unused or soon to be unused city property?
Well, we, through the SHAPE process, another process is have identify and financial task force processes have identified a number of city properties that are underutilized. The question has to be put to the community as to what they want to do with those properties. So we need revenues as our council recognizes, but we also need, uh, housing as our council has recognized. And so the community has to be brought along here in terms of how do we make these choices in terms of some of our, our, our properties? In a way, we are fortunate to have these opportunities to have these, these assets. But at the same time, they've been underutilized for many years. So we're fortunate, uh, that we have these available. We're going to have them to make a choice as to whether we want housing, hotels or other things for our community. We have to do that through a strategic plan, goal setting, build a consensus in the community after we give them the choices. These are the ways you can raise money. These are the ways that you can build some housing. In addition, of course, to the private sector, we have to do a, a joint venture, build partnerships with our private partners to look at all of these properties. Many opportunities there for sure.
Thank you. Ms. Toe.
Thank you so much. I was just writing down some notes to make sure I capture it. But we did as a council, because we, first of all, we have had so much community input over the years. This is part of what I'm excited to do is now to really be able to move forward as a council. I want to knock on wood, but now that we are out of those emergencies with the fires and the pandemic. And so we did give direction to have a preference for housing on the railroad site. This did come to us at council and we gave direction to do that. This is of course, once we have city hall move out and go over to the college space and those lands are available. And then we also want to look at the, and gave direction as a council to look at the city hall site for something that generates revenue, something that generates activity and good energy for Main Street. There is a huge opportunity having that site right next to Lyman Park, which so many of our community events are at. There's that gazebo. There's the concerts in the park. When we had Jingle All the Way and the beautiful holiday events, they were right there in the park. We've had different, um, La- Latin X events at that, at that same park. And I know that we can do so much more. That'll be good for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's great that we have these assets and I think it's just, uh, really important that we prioritize the community's needs and we assert those effectively. And that's, you know, takes, um, clarification, consensus from the community. And then, you know, uh, uh, city council and staff, you know, stepping into that with really open eyes and going, what is the best, you know, the, the best cost benefit of this asset? How is it best utilized, you know, for everybody? And, and it's a complex question, but, you know, when you bring all these minds and you bring all the community together, you know, the answers, you know, float to the top. So it's really important to, you know, take in everybody's, uh, uh, thoughts and consideration and then the reality of the costs and, and how do we, you know, effectuate that.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much. Uh, all, all good comments here. Um, you, you know, one of the wonderful things is we, we have some city assets. Uh, most of them are, are vacant and abandoned. Um, uh, Mr. Doring, um, uh, said the right thing, which is we need to bring the community along in a very transparent, at times difficult conversation about what are we going to do with these assets? The question can't just be looking at the assets itself. It's the entire list of liabilities that the se-, that the city is dealing with. So, uh, that can be a very inspiring conversation at the same time, very formative. How do we all move forward? There's room for every idea here. Everybody's priorities, we can put into a strategic plan and work our way there. So long as we're engaged with the entire broad community clearly and openly and very, very transparently. That's, that's, uh, issue number one. Revenue, obviously, closing these gaps, uh, would be part of that conversation.
Thank you. Ms. Bodine.
I think, uh, an, an incentive to, um, get people to work in the city is getting them work, uh, workforce housing on the, and that by the railroad. I, you know, providing housing for a person who works for your city, like even in a reduced rate and, and, and a nice place would definitely retain people, especially in St. Helena. So that's something I think about, but also weddings right there, um, you know, like Lyman Park. If, if that could, if we could use that, like everyone's saying, um, you know, to have events, I'm not sure weddings. I'm not, you know, I don't, I'm just, that was if, an event, events there that will generate revenue. Um, but you know, yeah, once again, like the essential thing that I started with here was I really want like a lot of planning. So if, you know, like, if we do just, if we, when we're talking about this, like looking at numbers, like how much do these things bring in? How much, you know, I, I just want there to be a, like a, a plan. Like if that, that goes out, I feel like 10, 10 years. So we have, we didn't, we don't, you know, make the mistake of going, oh, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't look ahead again. So anyway, yes.
Thank you. We have time for one more question and this will start with Ms. Toe. The question is, how do you plan to encourage and finance the building of affordable and mid-priced housing?
To build? Okay. So this is a really hard one. And housing is incredibly expensive, both the land and also the building costs. We're seeing right now, when you do small projects, it can be a million dollars per unit. As a small city with our budget, we just don't have enough funds for that. So how are we going to get it built? We're going to look at our own city land to do a project. And that's going to be mean finding really good trusted partners who have had experience and know how to go out and get the funding that we need to get. We have that now. One of the partners that we work with often in St. Helena is our town, St. Helena. They have told us and showed us that to have, to have the economies of scale, you have to have it be a bigger project. They can't just be the smaller infill projects. So we have different sites identified now that could be housing sites. We need to figure out one that actually we can have the housing built. We now, through the Farmstead Hotel, we had over $3 million as a part of that development agreement, go for housing. A million will be purchasing the land and the rest of that money is going to be used towards making the project happen.
Thank you. Mr. Summers. Mr. Summers.
Yeah, I think this is the, the million or the multimillion dollar question. You know, how do, how do we do this? I know we've been awarded grants in the past. We have an amazing staff. There's potential in being awarded grants for low income housing, uh, uh, you know, through California. And, um, the, I, I, I think that's the direction. Otherwise, we have to collaborate with someone in the private sector. And, you know, that could be just as difficult, but, you know, we have to step down these roads and be transparent with the truth and what is really viable and, and what's really possible. And, and how do we make it happen? But, you know, the only way we do that is coming together as a community, you know, including the council, the citizens and the city staff to find solutions to this incredibly, you know, difficult and.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much. This is, uh, one of our most difficult challenges. Uh, not only is it a, um, critical need for our community, it is the fabric of our community in fact, uh, but we also have water and, and infrastructure costs to consider as well in adding housing. So there's a, a huge cost component to it. Um, the city has done a number of things in the past, lots of little tiny things, none of which add up to a strategy. We need a housing strategy going forward as a community. The best way to do that is we, we need to partner with our town, St. Helena, and make them the de facto housing manager for this, this space for the city. We need to convert our, uh, form of government to a charter city and implement a real estate transfer tax of 2%. So anybody buying a home here in the future pays 2% as a toll to buy a home here. That generates $20 million for our affordable housing fund over the next 10 years.
Thank you. Ms. Bodine.
Um, I would like to say that housing is also not necessarily affordable housing, but just, uh, the community can come together too and, um, and discuss, you know, a three bedroom home going for $7,500. Um, I, I'm kind of always at a loss for words. Um, that doesn't bring young families in that want to rent to begin and then they settle by buying because they fall in love with our town, which always happens when they come here. So I just, I feel like there has to be some sort of way that we all agree, like, you know, two bedroom, three bedroom homes that, you know, for young families, young people, like that want to be here, working at the wineries and working the jobs in the city. Um, I want to find out, you know, what we can do to prevent the rents from, I mean, $8,000 for a three bedroom. I'm, to me, like, that's not inviting, so I would address that issue.
Thank you. Mr. Doring.
So I agree with my colleagues here that we do need a plan. We do have a housing white paper, the list of a number of ideas. We do not have an executable plan. We've been reactive over many years. We've done, we've done a lot of good things, including dealing with the Farmstead Hotel and getting that huge contribution. But, and we passed a, a hotel tax of, uh, an additional 1% to have income stream. I agree that we need a larger funding stream. I would like to look at the potential for a transfer tax that requires a charter city. We have to bring our community along there. They, they, they need to do that. We have to increase our impact fees. We have to make sure that all large commercial developers in all, uh, realms of commercial development have to contribute some fair share to the housing need. Housing is good for our economy. It's good to reduce traffic congestion and it's good to build a full spectrum community. We need housing because it's good for St. Helena.
Thank you. And that's the, all the time we have for questions. We are now going to ask each candidate to give a closing statement of one minute. And we'll go in reverse order and start with Ms. To.
So thank you again for having all of us and thank you for all of the candidates. I know this takes a lot of work to prepare and it was great to be on here with all of you. I want you all to know that I am driven by being of service and helping people. I know that being in this leadership position on city council is a privilege and I'm committed to it and take it very seriously. I believe in having a positive impact and working with others to make changes and to be a steward of good governance. I am proud and grateful of the endorsements that I have received. I've received endorsements from Congressman Mike Thompson, Senator Bill Dodd, Assembly Member Cecilia Aguilar Curry, our supervisors Diane Dillon and Brad Wagconnect, um, Anne Cottrell, who's on the Napa County Planning Commissioner, and she and I were both just running for supervisor. I also am very proud to have my council member support who are on here, Vice Mayor Paul Doring, Councilmember Eric Hall, and also Lester Hardy. That is a testament to me of all of the time that we have spent working together on all of these challenges and the relationship that we have built. I also received the endorsement from the Democrats of Napa Valley and the Napa County Democrats Central Committee, as well as the Snap and Solano Labor Council and a whole bunch of incredible St. Helena community members. Please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doring.
And thank you to you all for having this. My, my early life experiences, being raised by a single mom who had to raise six children by herself under very adverse economic circumstances have profoundly shaped the person I've become and influenced everything I do. They made me a proud father, a husband, a lawyer, an activist, and most importantly, for this community, a public servant. My core values, faith, grit, and a pragmatic, realistic approach are solidly connected to my humble upbringing and manifested in service to my family and to my community. I wish to continue with that service as St. Helena's next mayor. I'm proud that I have received the endorsements of five mayors of St. Helena, including Lowell Smith, Frank Toller, and Navarro, Alan Galbert, and our current mayor Jeff Ellsworth. I'm also proud to have the endorsements of Mayor Scott Sedgley and Mayor Leon Garcia. I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues and I'm looking forward to becoming the next mayor if the voters of St. Helena will have me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bodine.
Um, I look forward to continuing this journey I've started to learn more about city government, to step into this, um, exciting time for St. Helena's history. Um, I, I'm brand new at all of this. I'm just learning all of the terms and all of the way the city government works. And my child is now screaming, I'm going to say, I love St. Helena. That's why I'm here. I, I want to live in St. Helena and have my children be raised here. So I want the best for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much and, uh, thank you again for the opportunity to be here this evening. Um, you know, I just wanted to, to reiterate, uh, where I started, uh, this evening, that it's my intention to continue to work collectively broadly and deeply across our community. Uh, I've been doing this for the last two years. It's been a real pleasure and I just want to continue to work on this and help chart a new course forward to help restore our town and recover our community's way of life. Uh, St. Helena needs a lot of TLC. I'm hopeful that I'll be able to lead us through this important turning point. There's many, many challenges and changes facing us today and we need management skill to help get that done. I'm confident my 35 years of management leadership will help guide our community to this brighter future. This is why Senator Dodd, Assembly Member Cecilia Aguilar Curry, County Supervisor Diane Dillon, and State Treasurer Fiona Ma, uh, have all endorsed my candidacy for mayor. For the first time in years, St. Helena is enjoying substantial productive relationships with our regional and state elected officials.
Thank you. I'm afraid time's up.
Thank you.
Mr. Summers.
I love the town of St. Helena. I have lived all over the world and this is the greatest town I have ever lived in, in my entire life. I have a background in working with large teams of people, over 50 people, to achieve the common goal and work together at the same time and be efficient, you know, while the clock is ticking. And I'm able to work with all kinds of people and listen and, you know, absorb where people are coming from and see both sides of an important issue and slow myself down enough to find the solution that is the best for every single individual in the situation. And that is not easy. And I'm still learning. I'm still growing. I'm a human being. I make mistakes, but I love this town and I want it to continue to thrive and be a leader in Napa Valley so that we can, you know, be proud of this town and make it affordable and make it a great, to continue to live. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate you.
Candidates, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Napa County, I thank you for your time to participate in this forum tonight and for your willingness to serve the Napa community by running for office. Now I return the forum back to our host, Terry.
We especially thank the audience for joining this session to meet the candidates and for proposing your thoughtful questions. For further information about how, um, or to submit questions for our upcoming forums to learn about all the candidates and ballot measures, links to our Voters Edge Guide and other election information, please visit the League's easy to use website, l w v n a p a dot o r g. If you would like to be involved with the League of Women Voters, Men and Women, helping to make democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join. Just visit our website. A reminder that the deadline to register to vote and still get a ballot in the mail is October 24th. You can register and vote conditionally in person up until 8:00 PM on November 8th at a vote center or the election office. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to re-register. Also, please remember to sign the back, the back of your ballot and ensure your signature matches the one, uh, with which you are, um, registered. That's the back of your ballot envelope that you should sign. Um, to check on your registration or to track your ballot, see votersedge.org. If you vote by mail in Napa County, you can avoid any postal delivery delays by using one of the many drop boxes in Napa. You do not need postage. All drop boxes and the Elections Office Vote Center will be available starting Monday, October 10th at 8:00 AM. For the Dropbox locations and information on the other vote center locations and opening dates, see our Napa County Elections site at, um, there should be a slide, HTTPS, um, colon, backslash, black slash, W W W dot countyofnapa dot o r g, backslash, three, three, two, five, backslash, voting dash, information. The Election Department would like us to announce that we need more vote center workers. The pay is good for a few weeks of work. For details, see the County of Napa Elections web, webpage. Please, finally, encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote in this election. Every vote counts. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.